My name is Catherine Reinders and I am a member of the League of Women Voters Red Wing. The League of Women Voters Red Wing is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the active and informed involvement of citizens in the voting process. League of Women Voters Red Wing does not support or oppose political parties or individual candidates. The Red Wing chapter of AAUW, the American Association of University Women, is a co-sponsor along with UMW of tonight's forum. AAUW promotes equity and education for women and girls. The League of Women Voters Red Wing sponsors candidate forums to give voters the opportunity to hear and compare candidate stands on issues. Opinions expressed are of the candidates and not the League of Women Voters Red Wing or of AAUW of Red Wing. Each candidate will have the following time limits: one and a half minutes for the opening statement and for the closing statement. Candidates' answers to each question will also be timed at one and a half minutes. A timekeeper will hold up a 30-second card and then a stop card to remind each candidate of their response time remaining. This event is being broadcast live on Red Wing's Channel 6 in its entirety without editing and will be available for viewing later. Consult the Channel 6 schedule for viewing times. Because this event is being photographed, recorded, and broadcast, by entering this event space or remaining at this event, you consent to be photographed and recorded. Please see the crowd release poster displayed by the entry door for more information. If you do not wish to be photographed or recorded, please do not remain at this event. League of Women Voters Red Wing recognizes that personal devices like cell phones, cameras, and video recorders are commonplace. We ask that attendees silence personal devices. We also require that all attendees do not record this event. This includes no live streaming. Any use of personal devices must not disrupt or distract others or obstruct the view of others. Any person who records this event or causes a distraction, disruption, or obstruction will be asked to leave or may be escorted from the event. Now tonight's moderator, Sharon Marty, will begin the forum.
Thank you, Catherine. Again, welcome and thank you for coming to tonight's candidate forum for Red Wing School Board candidates. All six candidates for school board were invited to this forum. Holly Tower was unable to be here tonight. My name is Sharon Marty and I am the moderator for tonight's forum. Barb Ekstrom, a member of the League of Women Voters of Red Wing, will be assisting me. The candidates will be each answering questions. That they have not seen in advance, you, the audience, will be offered paper and pencils to submit your questions. When you have questions, please raise them high and wave them so that a league member can pick them up. All questions will be screened by a neutral league committee. Questions will not be asked if they are illegible, on personal matters unrelated to the elective position, unclear, inappropriately hostile, or submitted for the purpose of making a statement rather than gaining information. The candidates have been given the agenda in advance of this forum and have agreed to the following. Each candidate will be addressed by first name only. Each candidate will give opening and closing statements. Candidates will then answer questions in rotation with the stated time limits of one and a half minutes, and I encourage them to address the audience. The candidates are Jim Bryant, Arlen Derrickx, Janet Johnson, Mark Ryan, and Jennifer Tifft. Each candidate will be addressed and will give their opening statement now. We will now begin with the opening statement from each candidate. Jim, if you would like to begin.
Well, thank you, Sharon. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, excuse me, for attending tonight. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the AAUW for hosting this event. My name is Jim Bryant, married to Connie Bolt Bryant for 36 years, daughter Danielle, son Lucas. We lived just about a mile down from the high school on Flower Valley Road. All four of us graduated from Red Wing High School. Wonderful place. I was in the old high school across the street here. One of my old teachers I got to see tonight, and she's sitting in the back here tonight. Good to see her again. And it's just that we've lived here in this area all our life. I'm passionate about the school. It's a strong part of your community. I decided to come out here today just to come out and put my name in there to see if I can help make it even a better school. I bring a lot of different experience. My years as a police officer here in Red Wing, I retired, former county commissioner, Hay Creek Township Supervisor, business owner, and now currently a manager of a local business. But thank you again for allowing me to be here tonight and look forward to your questions.
Mark?
Good evening. My name is Mark Ryan and I appreciate your attendance tonight. Hopefully you will leave here a little bit better informed than when you arrived. My family and I moved to Red Wing 39 years ago. I came to town to teach at the Alternative Vocational Technical Institute, the Energy Education Center, what is now Tower View. That was my introduction to education, and it became my avocation and my career. My wife Marilyn was a third grade teacher here in Red Wing for far longer than she's willing to admit. I cannot walk down the street with her without having to stop when she says hello to somebody she knew or whose kids she had. Both of my children, my son Graham and my daughter Kim, graduated from high school here in Red Wing. My daughter was in the last class to graduate from the old high school. As I said, education became my avocation. I retired as a middle school science teacher and I have the battle scars to prove it. But I've also learned how much, how important education is to a community. I served on the school board for one term earlier and I learned the other side of the business, not from the classroom side but from the business side. I hope to learn more.
Thank you, Mark. Janet?
Hello. My name is Janet Johnson. I too want to thank the League of Women Voters and the AAUW for having this forum. It's really important to get to know the candidates. I have a lot of experience. I've been a social studies teacher in middle school, high school, for probably seven years. I've worked in the Residential Treatment Center in St. Cloud, Minnesota, and also have drug rehab for three years in Chicago. I also have been 21 years as a high school counselor and working extensively with students going on careers pathway, and I just love the plans that our district has for the career pathways and the flights. It's fabulous what they have planned. And I can't explain all my experience, so I would like you to go to janetjohnsonredwing.wordpress.com. I have a complete information about myself, and I have deep roots in Red Wing. My grandma grew up here, my dad, a lot of contacts. I haven't been a lifelong resident, but I've been here a long time. I also want to listen to everyone. I want to listen to the community, the students, the parents, and the teachers, and everyone in the community. And I'm going to have a coffee at Caribou Coffee on October 18th at 3:30 and one at November 1st at 5:00, and I invite you to come because I think one of the keynotes of my candidacy will be I will be listening. I want to listen and have lots of events like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Jennifer?
My name is Jennifer Tifft. Thank you all for being here tonight. As you, those of you who were here listening to Carston, it's a critical time for schools right now, and the fact that you're here shows that you care, and I appreciate that. I graduated from Red Wing Central High School in 1993 along with my husband Sam. We have two girls, Ellen and Nora. Ellen is in seventh grade and Nora is in sixth grade here in town. I went to Drake University in Des Moines, Iowa, and I have a degree in psychology with an emphasis in cognitive development and learning. And I wasn't sure what I wanted to do with that at first, so I volunteered in a Des Moines elementary school my junior year of college, and then I decided I needed to be a teacher. So I became an elementary school teacher. I went to the University of Minnesota and got my teaching certificate and my master's decree, degree in elementary education at the same time. From there, I was hired to teach in, at Papa Bridge Elementary in Bloomington, and I was able to teach there for nine years before we moved back to Red Wing. My big thing right now is volunteering on the Vote Yes, Yes Committee. I helped to organize it, and that is why I'm here today. I absolutely love the education plan that the district has come up with, and I don't want to let go of all of the hard work that we're doing to help get this referendum passed. I want to make sure that there's follow-through on implementing it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Arlen?
Once again, thank you, everybody, for coming here tonight. It's good to see a good crowd. Also, thank all of you for filing for school board. We've got a real quality list of candidates here. I ran for school board four years ago because there are some things I had concerns with. One was school finances, something everybody's worried about even today, transparency, respect. And I have this pride in my school. I graduated 45 years ago from Red Wing, 1973, and class reunion this weekend. And I'm so proud of the education I got here, and it's enabled me to do everything that I've done in my life. I did not go to college. And what a great school system we have here. The first meeting, when I took the oath of office, we started $1.6 million in cuts. That's what I was left with when I came in. Our finances were sham. We cut another $800,000 the following year. One of the things that bothered me is we were stressing college for everybody, in my opinion. We've come a long ways, and I'm really proud of the board members I've worked with. I think we've come a long way. I wasn't going to run more in the four years. I decided to keep going because people asked me, and there's a lot of things that left I want done. One is to have our school left in a good financial position when I leave the board. I want us to succeed in our career pathways, and I hope you vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlen. The next question, we'll start with Mark. Do you support the referendum about the operating levy?
The short answer is, of course, yes. This operating levy is essential for the school. It is essential. If we do not pass this levy, we will begin the dismemberment of the school district because it cannot continue to run on top of $2 million in cuts over the past four years, and then to go through another, how many more millions that we're going to have to give up if levy doesn't pass. We will never be able to achieve these goals of the education plan of STEAM education if you are having 36 and 40 kids in a high school classroom. You cannot do individualized inquiry-based instruction, which is a key element of STEM Elementary school teachers will not be able to provide the individualized support that is necessary for 28 second graders. The amount of energy that those students have, new teaching techniques. It's not sit behind a desk and fill out worksheets. It's one-on-one. It's individual student support. It's cooperative learning. None of those things can happen unless we have adequate funding from the public to keep this school going and growing.
Thank you, Mark. Janet?
Yes, I'm very passionate about quality education, and I believe that the plan that the district has presented is fantastic, and they have been very good with presenting so much valuable information that you can go online and read about it. You get these, the papers that they handed out tonight, and the presentation, and the amount of listening sessions that they provided the community. This referendum is essential to continue the good work of this school district. I think we have a lot of gifted teachers and people that are passionate about their career. They need our support. The student needs our support, too. To be successful, we have to continue with what we have and continue on the plans that have been presented. I think the STEAM pathway is wonderful, and to be able to allow the vocational path, the two-year college path, getting certificates from the high school, those 10 certificates that Mr. Anderson talked about, these are opportunities we've not seen before. And I think that we've got to be very excited about what we have in front of us. I think that we've seen the Yes, Yes Committee do some wonderful promotion. I like that, what I've seen. I just think the community is ready for supporting this referendum.
Thank you, Janet. Jennifer?
I absolutely agree. I was one of the organizing members of the Vote Yes, Yes Committee along with a friend of mine. We organized and promoted. We are working on promoting the referendum right now. Actually, I was just talking to a couple of people that tonight we have people all over town trying to promote this. But this referendum absolutely must pass. Question number one we absolutely need in order to maintain, to not make the cuts that would have to be necessary. But I think just as important is question number two, and the exciting things that are in the education plan. If question number two passes, we'll be able to have those career pathways and STEAM education. When I was teaching, STEAM education was an important part of my job. At that point, it was STEM. It wasn't called STEAM yet because they hadn't thought to include the art component. But at that time, 20 years ago, when I first started teaching, STEM was important, and it's time that Red Wing makes these changes because this is something that works for kids, and it's exciting with the career pathways that we are at the cutting edge of it and that we can do something that really works in our community, not just for the kids but for the community itself.
Thank you. Arlen?
Yes, definitely in favor of both questions. As chair of the school board, I had the privilege of guiding the process that we took after the failed referendum last year. We started with a decision in December to, yes, we are definitely going to go for another operating referendum. We spent more time than I thought we would need to, but it was thorough, it was open, it was transparent with input from everybody in the community, and I think we put out a very good product. And to be honest, there is no more cuts without affecting our education for our kids. One thing I will never do is short-change our kids. This is an issue about community because it's not just the school. Our school is a community, and if our school is not up to the standards it needs to be, we will not be able to attract people to work in our factories because they will live in another community where they have a better education system. We will not be able to bring in executives. We will not be able to keep our bigger industries going. This is a community issue, not just a school issue. And I just want to put this other thing out. Back when I was in school, we had a crowded central high school. We had four classes in the basement of First Lutheran Church, two in the Washington School. The foyer of the high school was used as a classroom, the band orchestra. Teachers did not have a classroom. They traveled from room to room. I wondered at that time, why don't the adults get it? I never want that for our kids. Vote for the referendum.
Thank you, Arlen. Jim?
Thank you. What a way to get the forum going, right away with the big question. Absolutely. I mean, Superintendent Anderson sat here tonight. It's the first time I've heard the presentation about the wants and the needs of the school community. Now, I live in the country. Everyone says town, but I don't look at it as a town thing. It's 20,000 people that live in the Red Wing School District that here to support it, and they want us to run their, keep their money, run their money like it's our own. What worries me about the referendum, just so you know, is that the county and the city's got a tax levy coming up this year, too. The cost is pretty high, and that's fine. People are going to vote for it, and I think it's going to, I think it's going to pass because people support their schools. The wants and the needs were certainly shown tonight with Superintendent Anderson's presentation. First time I heard it, like I said. If I'm on the board, I'd like to expand on that with some other things that we're talking about, instead of just always talking about and stuff, let's actually implement things. For instance, I had a meeting with a young man the other day that just graduated. He said, you know, they never taught me how to do taxes. Well, that started brainstorming us. How many know how to change oil? How many check oil? How many want a screwdriver Phillips or regular look like? Those little simple things in life. You expect your parents to do it when we're younger. My dad showed me, my mom showed me, and all that. Washing clothes, those type of things. We need to get back to some of the little things that help them become adults as they go forward. So, Mike, I see the stop sign, so I'll stop.
Our next question, we will start with Janet. How have you prepared for becoming a school board member, including attendance at school board meetings?
Well, that's a good question. I have been preparing since I applied, so I haven't had all year to prepare. But once I applied at the school district office, I decided to visit every school. So I have visited every school and talked to every principal, probably for at least an hour, asked all my questions, got good answers, and have become very impressed with the leadership in our district. And I've talked with, you know, Mr. Anderson. He's spent time with me, and I've just been, just very pleased to know that they would spend so much time talking to me, who's kind of an outsider. I've lived in Red Wing seven years, but I actually have grown up here as a child, coming once a month to visit my grandma. And I've owned property here for over 20 years, but we've only lived here seven years after we retired because this was where we felt like we're at home. And I just, seeing all the people and talking to them, talking to families, talking to businessmen, I haven't finished my campaigning, but I've walked around and visited with people. I've been attending the school board meetings and one committee meeting. I realize there's, I counted up 24 committees. So you don't just have two business meetings a month for the school board. There's 24 committees. One of the board members is on eight committees. So you know they're spending a lot of time, and I'm willing to put the time in. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Jennifer?
I guess to prepare for this position, it just, some things in my background would be the fact that I'm a teacher, that I have students in Red Wing schools, that I grew up in Red Wing and have lived here for the past 10 years. But the biggest thing would be the fact that I have been involved in the Vote Yes, Yes Committee over the past several months. I spend hours every day working on making sure that this referendum gets passed, and included in that is meeting with community members, talking to school board members, meeting with Carston, talking with principals. Coming up, meeting with our committee, we meet once a week and discuss things that we can do to make sure that this referendum passes, including social media, talking to the newspaper. We write literature. We work together as a team, which I think is a huge part of being on the school board, is being able to listen to each other, each other's ideas, and then work together to come up with something great that will work. And I see that we are doing that as a Vote Yes, Yes Committee. It takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, and like I said, I've been doing that for months, and I plan to do it for the next month. And it's the reason that I'm here today is because I don't want to stop doing that. I want to keep making sure that our school district is the best that it can be and help to implement this education plan.
Thank you, Jennifer. Arlen?
Well, I guess the best preparation is being on the school board. I guess the other thing is I feel like I know a lot of people in the community. I talk with a lot of people, and I get input from the people in the community. And I just want what's best for our kids to learn whatever they want to pursue. And so I've put the time in, I'm willing to do it again, and I went over the stop sign last time, so I'm going to quit now and give somebody else some more time.
Jim?
Thank you. Well, I was county commissioner for 16 years, served on the town board, like I said. I've been on a number of boards, chaired them, served on them, handled personnel, budget issues. It's, it's an area that I've had a lot of experience in. I think I can bring it to the table here. There are some concerns in the community about the spending in the past. Since I announced, I've had, I don't know how many people have come up to me and asked me and told me stories or questions about things going on. And so I think I can bring something to the table that helps look at some of those issues. I'm a person that's not afraid to ask the hard questions. Sometimes decisions aren't easy. You have to get, make your decision based upon all the facts, and when you make that decision, you support it and go on down the road there and deal with the next issue. But I've been on, running a business, too, gives me that business sense of things. How do, how do you approach things with people that you deal with? As a county commissioner and as a township officer, you always listen to people coming in, calling you, talking to you about issues, and I think I can bring that because I'm, you know, listening is a key, that you need to be a good leader.
Thank you, Jim. Mark?
Serving four years on the school board gave me a real insight into functioning of the administrative end of the school. You know, I did 20 years as a teacher. I learned the classroom. I learned how to look at schools from that side. But being four years on the board gave me a completely different view. The intricacies and the absolute confusion involved in school finance is breathtaking. Trying to get some, make some semblance of logic on a special ed is a miracle. I don't know how it's done, if ever. I listen to the community. I participate in a number of different community efforts. Every Hand Join, which is a community function, working closely with the school. I participate in some of the tables on Every Hand Join. I've been a strong participant in Red Wing 2040, which is an assessment of the city of Red Wing and what the people in Red Wing feel the city needs. And education is part of that assessment, part of what we've dealt with. So I'm listening to those people. I've been involved, I'm the assistant chair on the community ed board right now, listening to that group, a very diverse group of people, bringing a variety of issues and ideas to the table for discussion. I regularly talk to teachers, retired, current, community members. Listening is the key element for being prepared.
Thank you, Mark. Our next question, we will start with Jennifer, and it is, what are your ideas for addressing disciplinary and behavioral issues at the high school?
I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to talk to the high school principal, and this was obviously one of his big concerns. It's a concern district-wide after talking to all of the principals. I would say that one of the biggest things that we need to do, based on the fact that we have such a changing population in our town, is to make sure that we are listening to parents and communities. to parents and communicating with parents. I think we need to be aware of the population that we have and understand that our town is changing, and that not everyone is like us. We need to work with community organizations to help within the district. I think part of that is working with United Way and Every Hand Join, and helping to bring in new ideas. The principal at the high school right now had some good suggestions. Like I said, they realized that there are problems, and I think keeping the cell phones out of the classrooms is a good idea, keeping the backpacks out of the classrooms is a good idea. But I think it's building an environment within the school where the kids can feel safe and comfortable and know that they are valued. And that's a big effort, that takes a lot of work, and that's why I think it needs to be not just within the school, but more of a community involvement as well, with police department and other organizations.
Thank you. Arlen?
It's a good question, and it's one that, there's always going to be issues in a school with discipline. Last year was a bad year for us. A lot of steps have been taken this year to address that. How successful they'll all be, I don't know, but certainly enforcing policy by all staff, the cellphone policy, getting rid of the cell phones being used in some classrooms, working to prevent unnecessary moving around between classes, just also talking with people, reaffirming everything when there are issues. But I think the big thing is, we have to stress the values to all our students. And I always go with my acronym, HIRAC: honesty, integrity, respect, accountability, and compassion. And if we keep pushing values like this through on our kids, they will do most of what they need to, we'll still have issues with some of them, but as long as we keep focusing on good values in our school, the discipline will improve. We'll always have issues, but we'll, we're on track to improve things quite a bit, I'm sure. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you. When I was on the police department, the school came to us to look at bringing an officer into school, and was like, oh my God, what's going on here? But you look at it, it's like a little city. There are going to be issues every day. You've got to follow procedures, policies, and understand that behavior of one or two cannot disrupt the whole day event at that school. You have to act, you have to have strong leadership in the schools to get those things enacted and get those situations taken care of. They're going to happen, like Arlen says. You're going to, every day, you're trying to improve all the time. But, you know, I don't think anybody here can cast a wand and say, we're going to do it exactly this way every day, because every situation's different. Every situation presents itself with a different outcome. Where the, where's the child from? You know, when I was a child, if I got trouble in school, I never did, but when I, if I did, I was more worried about going home than what the principal could have done to me. I'm not sure that's there anymore. But let's, let's address it, let's deal with it, follow the procedure. I like no phones in the, with the kids and no backpacks. That's just a safety issue now, I know the school does, makes some, tries to get the kids to come in at a certain entrance. Not sure it always works, but let's hope it does. But every situation's differently, but it really starts at the top. You've got to have top, strong leadership to get those things implemented and get them started and get them followed by everybody.
Thank you, Jim. Mark?
Discipline in school is a difficult issue, and it is even more difficult in a time of change, just as we have right now. As aforementioned, the population of our students is changing. We now have 20% of our students who are students of color. And most people in Red Wing are somewhat surprised by that statistic. But those students of color bring with them a different worldview when they walk in the school. Teachers in our schools tend to be female, white, from rural background, with little or no exposure to multiculturalism. This is what I did my PhD doctoral thesis on. How does a teacher culture influence what happens in the classroom? It turns out that as, the classroom is a teacher's place. When I walked into my classroom the year after I retired, I recoiled a step, because it wasn't right, because it wasn't mine anymore. The teacher who had taken over changed it, okay? When a student walks through that door, a student has that same reaction. I'm walking into that teacher's place. And if that teacher's place is different than my place, how do I behave? Okay? And that teacher has a set of standards that are based on primarily Western European standards. If I'm from Somalia, I don't carry into that classroom that same set of standards. How do I know how to behave? In PBIS, they say, you don't know how to read, we teach you to read. You don't know math, we teach you math. You don't know how to behave, we throw you in detention. Doesn't work.
Thank you, Mark. Janet?
I, I feel like I have experience with counseling as a director of a counseling department in Chicago Suburban High School for four years, plus a counseling degree and working with students for 21 years as a counselor, and my experience as a teacher. I think that the schools need to, obviously, we've developed a new liaison for the high school, which is wonderful. That person can collaborate with the teachers, with the parents, and with the social workers, counselors, and have meetings. If you have an extreme case of a student, let's, let's collaborate about that student. Have, have a, a special group of staff that deal with these situations. Just don't push it off on the principal or the assistant principal, but start to do some brainstorming in a, in a setting that is comfortable for everyone. And mental health services are really important. We're not going to get away from it. Like you said, we've been changes of the, the student composition of our school, but it all boils down to respect. And the teachers have to respect the students, the students need to respect the teachers, of course, we want that, but it has to be shared, and it's, it's a collaboration of bringing respect, and that will help with the discipline issues. Also, survey teachers, find out what things they want. Sometimes we forget to ask the person that's working the closest with the students, what would, you know, have an anonymous survey, and just say, what are the things that we can do? I think when they took the cell phones away, that was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Our next question, we'll start with Arlen. How would you deal with unfunded mandates from the federal or state lawmakers?
Good question. I wish I had the answer.[1068.02][1068.02](laughter) A mandate is something that you have to do. So first, if it's mandated, you've got to determine, is there, is it something we want to do, and is it necessary to do it? If it's unfunded and you have to do it, I guess we have to find the funding to do it. So it depends on what that mandate is and how we're going to find that funding. I think we're doing that by having this operating referendum to the public. We're trying to find the funding to do the unfunded mandates. Sometimes the school district could do other things to secure other money, they haven't. There are other pots that you can levy without going to voter approval. We've gone to the voters and say, we need the money to function, and that's where we're headed with everything, and I'm being as open and transparent of what our needs are. And I guess that's all I can see, is how to do unfunded mandates, is ask the people to help us support those funds. And if it doesn't work, then we're going to have to cut some other program, which is something I really don't want to do.
Thank you, Arlen. Jim?
Thank you. When I was commissioner, we used to have a legislative day with our, at lunch with our legislators, state and federal people come in, we sit down, talk to them what we have, what's on our, our agenda, and obviously, we have different representatives or, you know, we used to have, you know, they've changed over the years, but we'd have that, and we'd have regular dialogues with them. We'd go in there and talk to them, push for them, for things that we want to see happening, not only to us, but for the whole area. There's no doubt that state and federal government have dropped the ball in education funding, special education especially. Working with our local legislators and our federal legislators, we can sit in there, keep, put a bug in their ear about it. We did the Highway 52 Coalition. We built that bridge at 952, because we had Dakota County, Homestead County, and Goodyear County working together for the funding of that corridor. Instead of just one group coming in there saying, we want money, we want money, we want money, it was a group saying, we want to get this corridor better. So, pressure on the legislators, but it takes the citizens, the school board, and anybody else that feels, has a passion for education, to work with, to contact your legislators to say, why aren't we getting our fair share down here in Red Wing, Goodyear County area?
Thank you, Jim. Mark?
You know, it turns out, most of the decisions that are made about what happens in a classroom are made by people who are nowhere near those classrooms. And funding is one of those key elements. The school district depends upon somebody else for almost all of its funding, and not just the members of the community. A school district is the only entity that has to go out and ask you for funding support. If a city wants to raise their taxes, they raise their taxes. If the state does, they do. If the feds do, they do. School districts are the only group that has to get approval to increase their levy. Those unfunded mandates are mandates. There's not a lot we can do, you have to work around them. And one of the ways to work around them is for the community to step up so that there is enough money available for the school district to work with not only those unfunded mandates, but those additional things that the school district would like to do. Much of it is beyond our control. We can lobby legislators, we can do whatever we must. But in the, in the, in the short, it is the community that has to step up and make sure that the school district gets the funding it needs. So much of its funding is determined elsewhere, and we have no direct control over it.
Thank you, Mark. Janet?
I agree with everything that's been said. I especially think we need to talk to our state legislators and find ways to decrease the number of mandates. Several years ago, they've decided to mandate every junior in the state of Illinois to have to take the ACT exam. The federal government funded it. Nice gig for whoever was the marketing person that got that deal. ACT, every student in the state. Well, Minnesota did the same thing. Well, you know, that's extra money. Not every student is going to go to college, they don't all need to take that test. And I believe in, in our district, we were able to back that off, so not every student, because the state, then they took away the, they took away the funds, and so the mandate's still there, but they took away the funds. But there's ways to find a way to not have to pay the funds, maybe have some students pay for their own ACT exam. It's, it's a one-time test that people take, but it's a huge expense as a mandated example of a mandated, unfunded mandate, because they took away the funds. So I think we can watch and try to get to our legislators and say, you know, some of these things are not necessary.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I also agree with everything everyone said. This is a difficult issue and something as a school board that you don't have a whole lot of control over. But I do think that working together with legislators and also with community members, I think if you do not have the funding, it's up to the school board, number one, to ask for it from the community through the referendum that they're doing right now, but also to come up with creative ways to fund things. How, are there other resources in our community that we can find to help us in some of these areas? And I think we're lucky to be in Red Wing where we have a lot of community resources and grants and options for us. And I know that our school board has used those in the past, and I hope that we can continue to work with our community to find more options. Number one, I hope the referendum passes, so it's not something that we need to discuss right now, but I do think that working as a community and finding their resources in a creative way is important.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Jim. What are your ideas for improving morale among teachers and students?
Morale's a big issue in wherever you go. Being when I was in the police department, you always ever talked about morale, morale. Encouraging them. I think they, as a school board, we are the decision makers, working all together to get everybody on the same page, to make the school, the school that we all envisioned to be by educational wise. I think we're like 78th, I think it is, in the state of Minnesota for schools that, that people like to come to. Let's improve on that. Let's work on that. I mean, not every day is going to be a great day, it's not going, there's bad days, everybody has a bad day. But I think working together, pushing it, rallying around the children, making sure that they get what they need, even if it's the basic stuff that they hadn't gotten before, can help the teachers feel better about themselves as this child comes back in the community, or they see him out and about and they succeeding at what they do. It's, I got my education here, I went on for small, two years of education after that, and I came back here and I think I worked in my hometown and all that. So seeing the fruits of what you can do certainly will, I think, I hope that it will be something good that the teachers and the staff and the school board respects and appreciates down the road.
Thank you. Mark?
Education has to be relevant. It has to fit into the lives of the students, it has to fit into the futures of the students, and teachers have to be allowed creativity to become engaged with their students. Sitting in a classroom with 30 desks in a row, having students fill out worksheet after worksheet, is not going to get anybody anywhere except demoralized. Implementing STEAM education, which is based heavily upon inquiry-based learning and cooperative learning, okay, which are engaging activities. Students get to determine what it is they want to do. How can you make a student more engaged than letting them have their own decision-making process? Make them part of the decision, okay? Allow teachers to be a little more free with what they is. Now, we have standards we have to deal with, you can deal with standards in many different ways, and still maintain a creative classroom, okay? We have to teach these students to learn how to learn, because right now, we're teaching them to take jobs that don't exist. When my student, when my children graduated in high school in the early 90s, nobody thought about microcomputers, nobody thought about coding, nobody thought about digital electronics because they didn't exist. We have to prepare students to work out in the world and make it relevant for them.
Thank you. Janet?
I believe that you can improve morale, and a lot of it has to do with perception. I believe that sometimes one or two parents or somebody's disgruntled because something happened to their student, and that makes them very unhappy with the school district. I believe the district is ranked by US News in the last ranking as a silver school. Now, they rank them gold, silver, and bronze. Well, these rankings, there was only seven schools in Minnesota that were ranked as gold schools. So to be ranked as a bronze, as a silver school was a high, high honor, and I don't think our community realizes that. And this is like a national survey. So we have a high honor. Even Woodbury and Minnetonka and Wayzetta, they were ranked silver, the same as Red Wing. So guess what? We're doing a good job, and we need to work on the perception of how, how we're perceiving the school. And I think we can have student advisories, where the students try to help on working on perception and behavior and improve the morale. They can be involved with making those changes, the students, the parents, the staff. And I believe we need to just realize there can be a community focus to helping the school with these problems.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I think the key is, for teachers, for teacher morale is to listen to teachers. They are doing this every day, all day long. They are running our school district, and I think it's important that we value their opinions and really listen to what they are seeing and the experiences that they have in the classroom. As far as student morale, I agree with Mark, the STEAM education, if we are able to fully implement that in our classrooms, the students will... the students will be able to make decisions in their own education, and they will value that. Um, with STEAM education, they learn how to work as a team. They learn how to value each other's opinions. That's exciting for kids. They, they enjoy it. For career pathways in the high school, if students have the opportunity to choose the direction that they are going to take for their futures and, um, really take pride in that, uh, that will help with morale. Uh, I think so much of our high school education is focused on that next test and, um, getting to college. And we have a large population in Red Wing that is not going to go to college. And we need to make sure that, um, they are provided an education that can lead them to a path where they can feel proud of themselves and feel like they've reached the goals that they've set.
Thank you. Arlen?
Uh, like Jennifer said here, um, listen. Listen to your staff. Take the time to hear what they have to say. Say thank you when they do something good. Tell them how you appreciate what they're doing. Compliment them on a job well done. Recognize all staff are important, not just the administration, not just the teachers. But include the paras, include the cooks, the janitors, the bus drivers, whoever else, the crossing guard. All of them are part of our school, and they're important. And they need to know how much we appreciate every one of them. Take the time to say thank you. And that's not just school board, staff, the administration needs to follow through on that. School board members, in my opinion, should take the time to visit the school and talk to the staff and say, hey, I do see what you're doing. I appreciate what you're doing. I try to go to the school, every school at least one day a year. You'd think it's very simple and easy to do. It's hard to find the time to even do that, but it's very important. Staff appreciates that you take the time to see what they're doing. And I'd encourage all our board members to do that. But just remember, listen to the staff. Take the time to say thank you. Compliment them. That's how, and do the same with our students. Listen to them. Take the time to say thank you when they do something good for you. Compliment them on their good deeds. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlen. Our next question, we'll start with Mark, and it will be, how can you better communicate with non-parent community members?
Yeah, that, that's an essential part of our community, because something, I don't know about, twenty-five percent of the households in the city of Red Wing have students in the school district. So those non-parents are a very key and essential part of the community. And it is, the, the school doesn't serve just parents. The school serves the entire community. Uh, opening up lines of communication is essential. Getting away from behind the board, okay, as Arlen says, get out into the classrooms. Go attend the Rotary meeting, okay? Uh, sit down for a cup of coffee with half a dozen people at Caribou and, and chat and listen to their ideas. They don't have to be parents to do that. Make it well-known that you're willing to sit down and have a cup of coffee and listen to ideas. There are a number of different ways that the community of Red Wing is looking to come together. Twenty forty, every hand join, uh, the latest, uh, poverty, uh, training that's beginning with the Baldwin. All of these are ways that the community is coming together. Join in to those activities, okay? Make sure that you listen to other people, because they are affected by what happens behind this school board desk as much as anybody else, okay? Don't just sit here. Listen. Get out there and listen to everybody.
Thank you. Janet?
Um, I believe that communication is real important. Um, I see that the district has, if, if people are interested, the district has done a good job. They've sent out the, um, wingersore.org. Then you get stuff from the high school. You, there's been a lot of communication. And I think what he's expressing is, we, we can do a better job in reaching people individually. We're getting a lot of, um, the tech, you know, information out there. And I love seeing that the schools are putting out pictures of what, what happened, like, in a fun event that the students did, like, the week before. If you, if you get online, you start to see that. And even though you're not a parent, it just makes you happy, because you see that they are promoting their school. They want you to know. But we have to get people to wanna, to look and listen. And I think that's one good way to do it, is to, to get out there and talk with people, get their ideas. And then, um, just, there's so many community groups in our town that are working hard for the, the district and trying to pass the referendum. And they want quality, because they are the business owners. They're the, the family members that have grandchildren here. And I've talked to a lot of grand, grandparents, that they want the best for their students. And we just need to keep talking. Thank you. Jennifer?
Um, the district, along with the vote yes, yes committee, has been working hard to get to different organizations and, um, plan events to try to pass the referendum. And I think it can't stop there. Carson especially has been going to different places and has been talking to a number of people. And I think that needs to continue. We need to continue having monthly meetings or however, however often it takes, just to continue updating our community on what is happening. Um, and I think that means meeting face-to-face. I think the newsletter is excellent. Um, the website, the district website is important. I, I think it needs a lot of work, because it's not, uh, easy to maneuver, especially if you speak a different language, or, uh, aren't, you're not from here. Um, but I think, most importantly, we need to work on meeting face-to-face with members of our community, just as we have been doing in the last couple of months. That needs to continue so that, um, Red Wing knows how hopefully this referendum is being spent and, um, what new things we're doing.
Thank you. Arlen?
We need to encourage the community to feel that our schools are their schools, that they take ownership. Have that pride. It's our school. How do we do that? Well, we need to communicate with our non-parents on the level that they communicate to people. We have a great e-news that came out. We got a Facebook page that developed in last year, and that's great. But not everybody is using our computers and cell phones for communication. Our rural areas are lacking on internet availability for many people, and the demographic is a lot of those people maybe don't use it. We started the quarterly newsletter this past year to recognize a few things happening in the school, to help people feel that, that it is their school. That's great. We need to realize that it's not just the non-parents that were, or non-parents, they do care. The child might be a neighbor. It might be a grandchild. It might be a coworker's child. All those, there's connections to our childrens from one end to the other. And on the other part, there's also a demographic, and I don't know how it relates in every class, but my class website from nineteen seventy-three, one-third of my living classmates have a Red Wing zip code. There's a great deal of our community that's still connected to our school, because they went to school here and they care about what's, what's here. So let's make the most of it.
Thank you, Arlen. Jim?
Thank you. We're an aging population. Uh, when I filed, I, I've had a number of people come up and talk to me when they see me out and about. If you don't know me, I'm kind of a people person. I don't, I like to talk. I like to sit down and visit with you, ask questions, how everybody's doing. Going to groups out there, the, the Kiwanis, the Rotary, the morning, uh, midday and noon Kiwanis are the other ones. All those, talking to people, getting out and having coffee. Now, not everybody wants to have that interaction with you, but there are people out there. Mark said twenty-five percent. I was, that was a number I was amazed at. I, I know we're an older population here, Community Ed. I was just on their website the other day. I signed up for the art class. I'm old enough to do that. That's, uh, the great tool, great resource right there for people to connect to the school district by going through the Community Ed webpage or the program through the school. People, the internet is, uh, certainly, the aging population, even an old guy like me is starting to use the internet a little bit more, the computers a little bit more. And, uh, I think that's, more people are using than you think. Um, but just communicating, talking, stopping, having coffee with people that get together regularly and just visiting, saying, hey, how you doing? What's going on? What's new? Uh, let them know you're on the school board. Uh, people will start talking right away to you. So it's a great tool. It's a great community. Let's hope we can, uh, keep, give people out there getting, talking about the, keeping the school going strong.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Janet. Please comment on the graduation rate at the high school.
Well, I believe the graduation rate is ninety-two percent. I hope that's right, but, um, and the graduation rate, um, I, I think that's a good rate. I, I would, here's what's happening in America. In Washington, D.C., for example, they have a hundred percent graduation rate. Guess what? Out of that hundred percent, thirty percent of the kids were gone ninety days during that year. Now, how on earth are they passing their classes if they're gone ninety days out of a year? And yet, they have a hundred percent graduation rate. Well, we have ninety-two percent, I believe. If I made a mistake, I'm sorry. But I think that's a good graduation rate. And the Tower View program has graduated, like, sixteen percent of the high school kids that graduated last year were, were Tower View students. So I think we're doing well. And, um, there's other reasons that people maybe leave, or they don't finish, and they come back and they complete, like, a half of a year later, and they do eventually graduate. But they might not have graduated with their exact class. Um, I don't think we should focus so much on those kind of statistics as we should just focus on, like, we're gonna do, the career pathways and, and the exciting things that we can be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Um, I, I also think it's around ninety percent, ninety-two percent, um, which is, is a, a good percentage for graduation. Um, and I, I, we should be thankful for the Tower View program, that we have that, to help, um, many of our students graduate. Um, I think with this education plan, the STEAM programming and the career pathways, we can even have a greater graduation percentage. I think that could go up if we empower kids to make decisions on the path that they would like to take and lead them, um, down those pathways by providing education in a number of different fields right in high school, um, providing industry certification and giving them an opportunity to try a variety of different things through the classes that we offer. We can raise that graduation rate. Um, I think also, it's important to, I, and I'm not sure what the statistics are or how we could track this, but to look at kids beyond graduation, um, you know, I think there's some kids that get to that point. They graduate and, and, and then they're still kind of lost. Um, and so where are our kids going beyond that? And the career pathways can help lead them to their careers and their futures. And in addition, I, you know, those, the students that do go to college, are they succeeding in college? And what can we provide for them in Red Wing to help them succeed in college?
Thank you. Arlen?
Our graduation rate is good compared to some districts, but like everybody says, we always want to try to make it higher. Um, I thought Tower View's, uh, percentage of our graduates was closer to twenty percent, but fifteen, twenty percent, whatever. It's, it's a large number for an alternative school that we're offering. But let's, and the presentation has mentioned that for those that choose to go that way, these are mainly at-risk kids that may not graduate had we not put out the Tower View program. It's a very important program that goes a long way towards helping our students graduate. What I, one of the things I want to work on in the future is, what is it that students find in Tower View that keeps them in school? And can we incorporate some of that into our high school? And I think that probably ties with our education plan, the career pathways, which is something I'm very behind. I think if a student feels that they're learning in something they're interested in, career pathways, you pick something of your interest. Once you have that interest, you want to learn. And wanting to learn is the key to being in school. And so, um, it's essential to keep our alternative education to help our graduation rate. But I think following this education plan is very important to keep our kids engaged in something they enjoy in school.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you. I'm gonna go with ninety-two, because that's the number I kind of heard too before, so. Can we get better? Sure. Let's hope we don't get worse. I think if you look at what, what are the kids and the teachers seeing that's succeeding there? What can we, we should be asking them, like Arlen said, go to the schools. I intend to do that if I'm elected. What do you, teachers, what do you see that we can do a little bit better on? Or what are, what are we missing here to reach these kids that want to make it exciting? Something that they just raced, run to, race, not race, run to school real quick, a little bit early, till they get there and learn some more. And those teachers and people that are just committed, saying, man, I got somebody that just want to grab a hold of, and this, this person wants to absorb it like a sponge. Let's find those people out. Let's find out what they do. Uh, I have, I have a friend that teaches in a neighboring school, and, uh, the kids just love him because he does this interesting program. I don't think we do it here. I'm not saying it's the, the cat's meow, but it's something that we should be looking at outside the box than what we're just currently doing. And I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to see what we can do to make kids want to just race, come to school, stay after, learn, 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 because they're not all gonna go to college, much as we want. We all, we push college a lot, which I understand. A great number of kids want to go there. But there's some kids that just want to go to a one- or two-year program, work at a school or work in a, a business right in the local area. And I want to empower our, our businesses to get more involved in that, to do some type of a program where we can have the kids work a couple of days a week there, so they're training them while they're in school. And then, as they graduate, they can start employment there.
Thank you. Mark?
Um, I have attended dinners at the ALC several times, and they are absolutely tremendous opportunity to connect with those students out there. One-on-one, why are they, what are they doing, and their attitudes and their ideas are fantastic. It's a program that works for those kids. Uh, the graduation rate amongst Native American students in our high school, the graduation rate on a national level for Native American students is forty-eight percent. Here in Red Wing, it's one-hundred percent for the past several years. Parent involvement, assistance at school, tutoring and aid. It's not a one-size-fits-all program. There are different kids. There are different needs, and we should learn what those needs are. Why do these students drop out of school? You don't suddenly wake up in the morning and go, oh, I think I'll drop out of school today. It's a process. It's the end of a long downhill slide on some relationship between that student and the school. How do we find out what that is? You don't do that when you have one counselor for four-hundred-and-fifty students. It doesn't work. We have to be able to provide counseling, mental health support, one-on-one contact. A student, a teacher in that school who knows something about that student personally. What his brother's name is, what her father's job is, not just she's in my health class, okay? We have to find out why these kids are dropping out of school and address those issues.
Thank you. We'll start with our next question, and Jennifer, we'll start with you. What is your understanding of the backpack policy?
Um, my understanding is that due to some issues last year and in the last couple of years, where kids were bringing backpacks, um, to classroom, to the classroom, rooms were getting filled with backpacks, so there wasn't a lot of space for people to walk around. There were some students who had, um, contraband or items in their backpack that should not be in a school. And so now, students are no longer allowed to bring their backpacks to the classroom, but they, they have to remain in their lockers. And so students have to go to their lockers, um, in between classes to get their things. Um, I think this is a great policy. I think it's not necessary to have backpacks in the classrooms. I think it can lead to a lot of issues. The students are more than capable of walking around, um, from class to class into their lockers in between to get their items. And I think, eh, even if they're a little frustrated with the new policy this year, uh, they'll grow accustomed to it, and, um, it won't be an issue any longer.
Thank you. Arlen?
Um, my understanding is the backpack, one of the major issues is they take up a lot of space, and they get set on, down on the floor in the classrooms, and they're already crowded with a lot of students. And it can be a problem for tripping over is one of the issues. Another is the idea of contraband in, in the backpacks, possibly hiding a cellphone in there. The talk was there was not that much need for backpack, because they're on a block schedule. There's four classes a day. So you should be able to go and carry books for one or two classes and then go back to your locker. Some of the concerns that are out there, though, are... though, are those lockers in the high school are very small. That building was built so people could see over the top of the lockers. There's not a lot of room in them. And so, I'm not just sure how this whole policy is gonna work in the end. I took the time to talk to a student here when I was up at the district office here a couple of weeks ago, and I asked how things were going, and he says, "Well, I don't mind the cellphone policy. That's all right." But, he says, "I miss my backpack. He says, "I, I don't have everything with me. I keep forgetting to bring pencils with me." So, I think there's an adjustment factor in there, but all of these changes at the high school, I think, are going to be reviewed, and if there are issues, find a solution that meets partway or to address everything that's needed.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you. My guess is just looking at the backpack policy as a safety issue. Safety issue for the size in the classrooms, safety issue what could, could, could not be put in the backpack and taken to a room. I think, you know, backpacks are necessary. My kids had backpacks when we were there growing up, but I think being in the locker room, being in the locker, it's not a hardship at all. There's, life is full of changes all the time. There's life, every day, there's a change in somebody's life. And if you have to leave your backpack in your locker, you gotta walk down a little ways and get it, and go back and get your pencils. Sooner or later, I think you'll remember you'll get your pencils and bring them to the school, or to your class. But I think it's a, I think it's a good policy. It certainly is, I believe, probably a safety issue is why they brought it up.
Thank you. Mark?
Well, I know backpacks were a safety issue in my classroom, and that's, that's why I banned them. They weren't banned school-wide, but they were banned in my classroom. I was teaching a science class, and my students were up walking around carrying science equipment, so, and I don't know how many times I tripped over backpacks myself. So, they were banned as a safety issue. There's no need for a student to really carry an entire backpack worth of gear around to every class all day, okay? You can get a couple of books. The lockers are fairly centrally located in the building. It's not hard to go back and forth. You gotta go past them from one class to the other, so stop by for 30 seconds and take out the next book. The stuff the kids put in these backpacks, much of it absolutely unnecessary. Not necessarily contraband, but huge bags of, without being sexist and bags of makeup, I mean, just beauty parlors and those things. And, and your gym clothes stuffed in your backpack, they're not necessary. You take a couple of books, you get a book, a pocket, pencil pack, you zip it up, put two pencils and eraser in there, you're covered for the entire day.
Thank you. Janet?
Well, I agree with everything that's been said. It's a safety issue. The school district made, to them, maybe a tough decision to take the backpacks away from the students, not allow them in the classrooms. They did increase the time to walk between classes, so they helped accommodate that, which was, was good. They weren't pushing the kids to have to run and, and not have any time to get their backpacks. They've also instructed, I believe, in the high school level at least, that if the locker gets broken, they can get that fixed immediately that day. They can notify the proper authorities, and that locker is gonna be fixed immediately. So, there's, they're trying, the district's trying to accommodate what they can to help the kids get used to this policy, and it's not gonna take long, and I think they'll be fine with it.
Thank you. This will be our last question before we go to closing remarks, and we'll start with Arlen. What is your understanding of STEM or STEAM, and that's Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, Math? Do you support the implementation of this in the schools?
Well, I think you described it pretty good.
Yeah.
STEAM is Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Math. It's to incorporate that into our curriculum. And so, even at our elementary age or whatever, whether the sciences be studying some of our ecology and different things in some of your projects, technology, using computers to control some device you might make at school. I mean, arts, you can have a shop class, and I know I've seen it at the high school before we even talked about this year, where there was a metal class where you made art out of metal. And you would find a picture and make, make some device, or some replicate a flower out of metal, or whatever. Well, you got arts, and you got technology, and all these different things. So, it's just incorporating all these different things into your curriculum as you go along. And, and I support it. I think we've always been doing it. It's just that we're putting the word STEAM, which is without the arts, but arts is very important in our community. We're an art community. Also, do not forget that art also includes music. And I think we're just putting a term to what we've probably been doing all along, but we're gonna concentrate on enlarging it even more.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you. I'm very excited about STEAM. I listened to it tonight. It's in the elementary school, starting to do that. I think the technology part is even growing with these, with the younger generation. I mean, anytime my phone, cellphone acts up, give it to my son or my daughter, they'll correct it pretty, fix it pretty quickly. So, the technology part is there. The arts part, I really like, our daughter, when she was younger, participated in that Arts Alive. What a wonderful event that was down at the Sheldon. So, the arts, you got the extracurricular, you have all that mixing together. I see nothing but positive things to come out of that down the road. I'm encouraged by what it's doing, and I look forward to seeing the, the end results of the STEAM program. They used to call it STEM, didn't they, or something like that? Now it's STEAM? Yeah, STEAM. But it's been going on in the, around the state of Minnesota for quite a while. It's been on, you know, going to Minnesota Education website, and they, STEAM has been around for a number of years for other places. I think it's gonna be very good for the Red Wing area here.
Thank you. Mark?
If you're not teaching on a STEAM basis, you're practicing educational malpractice. STEAM is the most cognitively engaging method of instruction that is, in the past 20 years, we learned so much about how the brain grows, how we learn, and how the brain functions. Inquiry-based learning is the, is the foundation of STEM, STEAM. Engaging students, allowing them flexibility, allowing them to be involved in decision-making. I've already mentioned this a couple of times. But I was, I was a STEM teacher. I was awarded national awards for, for my STEM teaching, so it's, it's been a part of my educational practice since I started teaching. It is flex, it's, it's good. It's the only real good way to teach. Students walk away with the ability to learn how to learn. As I said earlier, they're gonna prepare themselves for careers that don't currently exist, that they'll learn how to learn. And that, I've said about just everything. It's, it's a fundamental way to learn.
Thank you. Janet?
My understanding of the STEAM is that it's a good focus. I believe that the district's headed in the right direction. I know it's been called STEM, and the district has actually hired someone that has a master's degree in STEM education. So, we're, we're moving that direction. Tonight, there's a STEM activity at Burnside, and it includes Sunnyside School, and they have over 150 people signed up. And that's at the elementary level. So, we, we have a lot of exciting things that are happening. It's the jobs of the future are gonna require that kind of learning, that kind of interaction with technology. And so, we can't miss by going forward with this, and it's a great opportunity we have.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I, I think the important thing to understand is that STEAM is a new way of, not a new way, but a different way of teaching. It's a hands-on inquiry-based approach, so it's not just doing all of these different things, science, technology, engineering, art and math, but it's doing them at once in a classroom. And especially in the elementary setting, this is a natural way for kids to learn. When I was first hired to teach 20 years ago in Bloomington, I was hired as a prep time writing teacher, and my coworker was hired as the STEM teacher. This was 20 years ago. We were basically the same position that Sunnyside and Burnside now has this year. We took over the spot, the library spot. We worked together on projects where we would come up with questions for the kids to answer, and she would work on the investigating, the experimenting, the problem-solving math parts of it. And I worked on the research, storytelling, reading, art projects, but we were, it was all one thing, and we worked together, and the kids learned in so many different ways, all at once on one project. And it helped them develop not only their writing, reading, math, science skills, but as we've discussed before, how to work together as a team, how to value each other's opinions, how to ask great questions. It's a really natural and exciting way for kids to learn. They enjoy it, and they stay engaged.
Thank you. We will begin our closing remarks, and Jim, you will begin with your closing remarks.
Don't start your clock yet. Well, first off, I want to thank everybody for taking the time out of their night to come down here. My wife especially, she's missing the start of the wild game right now, so. And she wants me to get going here. I appreciate it. This is, I'm very excited about putting my name in here, and welcome, I thank all the participants tonight, and I wish Holly would have been here, too. But I look forward to looking at, if elected, to get on the board, ask the tough questions. I'm a person that tells you what I think. If I agree with you, I'll agree with you. I don't, I don't. I mean, that simple as that. There are concerns in the community about the school district, and I, and I was one of them. That's why I put my name in. I wanna, when I get involved in something, I get involved to hopefully make it better. Not that it's bad, but I don't want to make it worse. So, you have my commitment for me to, you'll get, I will work hard to make this the school that we all want, we all expect, and we all desire to see and need in this community. Schools can be, are like, we've talked about today, are like the backbone of a community. That's where people come. People will come here if we have a strong community. But we have to also do it right. Whether the referendum, if the referendum passes, I'm gonna be looking at the spending and the finances. If it doesn't, I'm gonna be looking at the spending and the finances, as simple as that. And I'll be happy to take questions anytime, call me. I don't do Facebook. My wife does, so you can get ahold of her on that, and she'll, she'll, she'll send me a message. But I thank you again for your time, and appreciate your vote on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank everybody for participating here tonight. It's been especially interesting to hear the ideas of all the other individuals up on the board here. There's some good people running for school board this time round, and I'm glad to see that. And hopefully, we will end up with a truly committed school board where the members are focused on the education of the students in this district. As I said, this is not a one-size-fits-all plan. This is custom work. We're not creating widgets. We're, we are treating with 3,000 individuals, each of whom has their own story, each of whom has their own strengths and weaknesses and needs, okay? It requires customization. Broad policies don't work. And the school board is not a management level. We are not, school board members don't manage the district. They are policy creators, policy institution, okay? The management of the school district goes to the superintendent and the, the department heads within the district and the principals at the high schools. As a school board, we issue policies and expect them to carry those policies out. If they don't, then you hold them accountable. But the school board is not a micromanagement organization. We need to look at big visions like STEAM, like the education plan. What is it we want this district to look like in 25 years? Thank you.
Thank you. Janet?
Thank you for listening to us tonight. I believe I have years of experience, and especially my experience as a school counselor and working with career education, that would could bring a very valuable experience to, to this community. I believe that, actually, after listening to everybody, I think everyone in this forum will do great on, on the school board. I think the school district has a lot of strength here, and I think the community will be happy no matter who wins. Of course, I want to ask you to vote for me, but you know what? I've enjoyed this process, and, and if I don't get on the school board, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm gonna volunteer somewhere, because I've been so impressed after this time of examining and, and getting interested and involved at the school district, that I just want to say that I'm very impressed with what's going on, and people should be happy for, for what the community wants to do in this district. And just, if you want to vote for me, that's great.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Once again, thank you all for being here. This has been a great opportunity to listen to my fellow candidates. It's been a great learning experience. I would just say that the reason I'm here is because I am excited about the opportunity, and the opportunity for change in the Red Wing School District. The education plan that was created is the reason that I'm here, and I think it has a lot of opportunity for our kids, for our community, with STEAM education, with career pathways, new and exciting things happening. I would say that as far as characteristics that I have, I'm dedicated, I'm a critical thinker, I'm a listener. I enjoy being involved. Being a part of the Vote Yes, Yes Committee has helped me realize even more so how much I like to be involved in the community of Red Wing, and I just really hope to continue doing that as part of the school board. So, thank you.
Thank you. Arlen?
All right. This summer, I spent a lot of time trying to decide if I should run again. When I filed four years ago, I said four years is my intent, and I was gonna be done. And people ask me, if you're asking for this referendum, we want you to be involved and making sure the money is spent the way we are talking about. And I also looked at, if for some reason, which I can't see, this referendum fails, I don't want to leave somebody with the mess I was left with, with cutting $1.4 million of very first meeting I was sworn into office. I don't want to go through that experience, but I will do what's in the best interests of our community if those cuts have to be made. I want, I'm not done yet. I want to continue to work on improving communications with the public. I want to follow through on this plan of career readiness, because one of my main concerns was, we're stressing college so much, and now we got this plan here. We're going the right direction. I want to see it through. And I want to leave the district when I go in a sound financial position that's gonna sustain itself in the future. So, I would really appreciate your vote, but you can't go wrong with anybody that's here tonight. Every one of these candidates is a quality candidate. So, like I say, I'd appreciate your vote, but what's more important, please vote yes, yes. That's important.
Thank you. And thank you to all of the candidates. We have some closing remarks, I believe?
Well, yeah, thank you to the candidates, the audience, the league members, AAUW members, and the City of Red Wing staff for tonight's candidate forum for the Red Wing School Board candidates. I invite you to learn more about the League of Women Voters. We have information out on the front table, and please consider this to be your call to action, and be sure to vote either early or on November 6th. Thank you.